Good evening. I'm like to the Cedar Rapids Community School Board Regular Board of Education Meeting and Work Session. Today is Monday, September the ninth. I'm calling the meeting to order before we begin. We have a revised agenda, so I will turn that over to Laurel.
Thank you. So this evening, we've got a couple revisions that we made after the agenda was sent out. The first is under the Consent Agenda BA 20080, which has to do with an agreement with the Curriculum Associates. And it was, there were some texts that were, was left off of the pertinent facts. So it was a copy paste, and not everything got copied and pasted. So you have complete pertinent facts there for you. And then secondly, under Administration, BA 2106, which is the Resolution on the Scheduling of the Public Hearing, Pertinent Fact Number Two. There was a number of January 1st of 2015, and it should have said 2051. So it was just a transpose of the number 1, 5 to 5-1. So thank you to Director Borcheting for bringing those to our attention.
Thank you. Gary.
And with that, I move that the revised agenda of Monday, September 9th, 2019, Board of Education meeting be approved as set forth, and that each item is considered ready for discussion and/or action.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Director Jacobo.
Aye.
Director Borcheting.
Aye.
Director Anhalt.
Aye.
President Humbles.
Aye. Next, we'll move to the Superintendent's Report.
Well, thank you, President Humbles. Certainly have some things to celebrate this week and over the past couple of weeks. Shout out to our Building and Grounds Crew and Kingston Management of the unveiling of Kingston Stadium at all of our home games has just been an absolute delight. And so I'd like to share with you this video highlighting the process it took to get us to the point where we are today. But just as a quick note, every single one of our comprehensive high schools have now had their first home game, and it has been an absolute delight just to watch. I wrote about this in my pot, or my blog this week, just our community members are in absolute awe and absolute gratitude of our great facility. So we have a quick video to share about that.
Built in 1952, Kingston Stadium is the primary location for football and track and field events in the Cedar Rapids Community School District. Throughout the venue's 67-year life, it has seen several renovations and ceremonies. The 2019-2020 school year has brought another round of updates to the complex. Artificial turf was first introduced to the field in 2009. With a lifespan of about 10 years, it was time to be replaced. A safety padding that was not available 10 years ago was added as an additional layer of protection. The entire track was removed and replaced with the addition of an eighth lane. In order to accommodate the expansion, the lower sidewalk and fence had to be adjusted. Spectators have not been able to sit in the North Horse Shoe since the early 1980s when the bleachers were removed due to safety concerns. The concrete was removed, and the area has been restored to grass. New Americans with Disabilities Act compliance seating has been installed and brought up to standards. The east bleachers will now have ADA seating as well. An area that most never think about has also received an update. Below the bleachers is concrete and needs to be regularly maintained to protect it from the elements of weather. Bleachers were removed, and the concrete area below was power washed, inspected, and any cracks were filled. Finally, a protective coating was applied to protect against water damage. The district's building and ground staff, along with contractors, began the projects shortly after the school year ended and worked continuously over the summer in order to have the stadium completed on time. The department takes great pride in maintaining a safe and fun venue for its future-ready students.
I'll tell you, the field feels like a Tempur-Pedic mattress. So I enjoyed it for sure, but to watch our kids play out there and march and enjoy it, certainly that's always the reason, is to support them in their learning. So thank you again to the leadership there, Mr. Galbraith, Mr. Dunbar, and teams. It was tremendous work. So in addition to that, we get supported by a lot of folks, including our Cedar Rapids Community Schools Foundation. It had a record last week, and one day, more applications were received for our school employee grants, which is really opportunities for our employees to apply for funding for their classrooms to support student learning. So they had a record-high number in one day of 52 applications. The applications will still continue to come in, but over $9,400 of asks for funds that we anticipate will be granted, and the Cedar Rapids Community Schools Foundation will continue to support those efforts throughout our district. But that was really cool to see. Our teachers are asking and receiving that support from our foundation. In addition to that, our facility's master plan, Community Open Houses, are coming up. So on September 16th, we'll hear more about this this evening as we get an update from our architects on our new elementary plans. But on September 16th, we have a Community Input Session at Coolidge Elementary, and on September 25th, down in the Newbo Market area, getting input from our community about what they hope to see in a new elementary. So we look forward to those Community Input Sessions. So speaking of getting the word out, we have been using some new social media platforms. If you're familiar, last year, we had some live events called schooled events that were our own version of TED Talks, and we have scaled that branding to now a, my blog that I've been authoring is now the schooled blog, and really others can contribute to that as authors. But we also now have a podcast, and we're one of the very first school districts to have our own podcast. Justin Schaefer, the man behind the scenes, actually behind that scene right back there right now, has been spearheading that technology. And our first guest was Dr. Ryan Wise, our Director of our State, and I was also a guest on our first episode, just talking about what's on the scene for public schools in the state of Iowa this year. So we look forward to that continued work. But the word got out quickly, and schools from across the nation are calling us up and saying, hey, we'd like to do that, too. So we're really proud of getting the word out and telling stories beyond just within the walls of our district, but our community, hosting community members to the schooled podcast event as well. I'd like to say special congratulations to one of our very own, Molly Safranco. Molly has been named the Iowa Secondary Art Educator of the Year. Molly's been a longtime veteran in our school district. She's taught at Metro, most recently at Big, and now she's at Johnson Steam Academy, stretching her roots from the secondary world to the elementary world this year. Very proud of Molly receiving this award and just being a leading art educator for the state of Iowa. So congratulations to Molly on that. We had a great turnout for the Infinite Campus Online Certification Verification Open House that was hosted right here. And as you can see, pictures on the screen, we had over 75 English-language learner families come that night and get assistance through translation services and supports through our employees and volunteers. And so thank you to our employees, our translators specifically, our ELL Department, as well as Amy Marner there, who's been championing our online registration process to give our families access and support through that verification process. And finally, a special congratulations to our very own President Humbles, who will be inducted into the Iowa African-American Hall of Fame on September 20th. There's only two inductees this year, and President Humbles is one of those. She's had a lot of contributions to her community, our community, and the greater eastern Iowa area, actually. Her longtime work at the University of Iowa, as well as our school district, the NAACP. Congratulations sincerely, and thank you for being such a great community supporter, which is the preface for receiving this great honor. So we thank you for all your work, and well-deserved.
Thank you.
And that's all. That's all I have. We get to end with you.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have any Board Reports?
I do have a couple of things. I was able to sit in on the Policy Review Committee to kind of look at the process of what happens when Iowa Code is getting updated with our district content experts, administrators, attorneys, sitting around reviewing Iowa Code, making sure we are compliant with updates, there's reflective language between regulation and policy, and that we are providing some, we are consistent with some other districts across the state. So that was interesting and an awesome field to observe, so I appreciated being able to do that. Also, on Saturday, was able to attend the NAACP Freedom Fund Banquet with President Humbles, and Superintendent Bush, and Rod Dooley, and Lyndon Ogle, and some other administrators that I don't have written down, sorry. But it was a great night, a lot of success stories within our community. It was just really wonderful to be a part of, and was very proud to be there as a Cedar Rapids Community School District Board of Ed Director.
Any other reports? Okay, thank you. Next, we'll move to Communications Delegations and Petitions. And we do have one person that would like to speak before the Board. When you step forward, if you could give your name and address, and you will be given five minutes, and Laurel will keep track of your time.
My name is Carla Graburger, and my address is 4851 First Avenue Southwest, Apartment 1D in Cedar Rapids, and our ZIP code there is 52405. And I am addressing the Board today to share with you some concerns regarding my application for my son, Daniel, who is in fifth grade at Hoover right now, and he is 11-years-old. He is twice exceptional, having autism, sensory processing disorder, anxiety disorder, and dysthymia, but is also talented and gifted. And we are struggling right now with him. He revealed last year a number of episodes of bullying after the school year was over. We had just moved a year, a little over a year ago, into our neighborhood, having lived in Marion all of his life, where he attended Lynn Grove Elementary in the Lynnmar District. And he really struggled with that move, as did our whole family, quite frankly. And our neighborhood where we are living is not a very safe one, and he has not dealt very well with the move, and losing some of his friends, though he didn't have very many friends outside of the school setting, even at home. But at school, he has not been able to make any friends at all, and none whatsoever in the neighborhood because of the, because of the lack of safety within the neighborhood, that he's just not able to go outside and play in our apartment complex where we live. And it came up over the course of the summer in conversation with his therapist, as he begged and begged and begged not to have to go to school. And we battled last year with him, begging not to go to school, that perhaps a different form of education might be better for him. And one of the things that came up late in the summer was the possibility of an online education. And one of the things that we researched and found out that he would be able to get into was Iowa Connections Academy. And so we applied for Iowa Connections Academy and open enrollment, which we knew was late, past the March 1st deadline, and found out that we were denied that request by Cedar Rapids School District on the basis of being late. But had also shared with Mr. Rice the incidents that Daniel had shared over the course of the year, the struggles that he had had. He had also shared with his therapist over the summer that he had been bullied while he was at Hoover, and had not shared that during the school year. But that came out with his therapist during the summer. So no bullying report was ever made, because that came out with his therapist over the course of the summer. And so we do have a letter from his therapist that Mr. Rice does have as part of the supportive evidence, if you will, that his therapist wrote a letter of support of open enrollment into Connections Academy. She wrote, "As his mental health counselor, I believe home-based public school could be an adventatious avenue for Daniel to continue pursuing educational endeavors. I have heard that this program is also able to tailor learning for those considered talented and gifted," which Daniel has also been categorized in this area. Now, one of the things in conversation with Mr. Rice was that he said he had spoken with Tiffany Zarifkar, his therapist, and that she felt that the Cedar Rapids Community School District homeschool option would be an adequate and sufficient replacement for him. And I had a conversation with her over the weekend, however, was not able to have a conversation with Mr. Rice today about this, but she shared with me.
Excuse me, Mrs. Graburger, your timer's up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for your comments, and I'm sure the administration will get back to you.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Next, we will move to our Consent Agenda. Is there anything, any items that the Board would like pulled or for further discussion? Seeing, and due to the personnel report, we'll have a roll call.
Director Borcheting.
Aye.
Director Anhalt.
Aye.
Director Jacobo.
Aye.
President Humbles.
Aye. Next, we'll move to Administration, a Resolution for Revenue Proposed Statement. Dave Nicholson, I'll turn this over to you. Yeah, I was gonna say that you probably just stay after that.
Yeah. This is very brief here. The Revenue Purpose Statement, as required by the new legislation that was passed, we were required to adopt a new Revenue Purpose Statement. And with that, the language that's being proposed is similar language that's, that the area schools in the metro area, Lynnmar's College Community and Marion are all doing very, very similar, if not exact, language that we're looking at proposing. What is different, I have in your packet a copy of the one that's current, and what's, and then the proposed language. And what's really the most different is there's some language talking about security and safety that was not in the last Revenue Purpose Statement in 2009. That's more prominent in this one. And also, there's some language in there for startup costs for home, for the student-built house, in case the house hasn't sold, and then you need some startup money, you can use save money to be able to do that if we needed to. Those are the main two changes that are, that are a part of the Revenue Purpose Statement. So I just wanted to bring those to your attention.
Okay, so we need a motion to accept.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Director Anhalt.
Aye.
Director Borcheting.
Aye.
President Humbles.
Aye. Next, Dave will provide us with the information on scheduling a public hearing for the tax-revenue refunding bonds.
Now, with the sales tax bonds, that, too, was part of the legislation, and that as a part of that new legislation for the save, there's a requirement to have a, a public hearing for the issuance of the saved revenue bonds, whether it's for new or refunding. So as part of this, we're, the last meeting, the Board approved moving forward with the refunding, which we would save a little over, potentially over $5 million on those bonds. So as a part of that, we have to have set a public hearing. This is what this is doing, the next step in that line, and with hopes to have a closing done on these bonds in November is our goal. But this is the next step in that process.
So we need a motion to schedule the public hearing.
So move.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Director Anhalt.
Aye.
Director Jacobo.
Aye.
Director Borcheting.
Aye.
President Humbles.
Aye. And next, we have the approval of an engagement letter for school infrastructure, infrastructure sell and service.
Yes, this is also the part of the refunding of the bonds. Part of that, we have to approve the engagement with our bond counsel on that. We had already previously approved for Piper Jaffery already, but now this is the next step, is the bond counsel. So this is just approving that engagement for them to handle all the legal documents that we need to do on the refunding.
Thank you.
So move.
Why, I need a voice vote on this one.
A voice vote, okay.
That was good.
Okay.
You were ready. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Gary. So moved. Next, we'll move into our Work Session, the Coolidge Elementary Vision Casting. We have Noreen and Dave.
And really, I'm going to hand it over to Dave so he can introduce our guests tonight.
Yeah. This is the highlight of the meeting tonight. So, so tonight, we have, with OPN here, we've got Roger Worm and Joe Tursi. They're going to unpack a little bit more based on our Coolidge, a new elementary at our Coolidge site. Last time, you heard a little bit of a timeline, and they're actually gonna unpack a little bit more and see what has been happening, and the mission casting that has been set and moving forward. So, Joe and Roger.
Hello again, everyone. I'm Roger Worm with OPN, Joe Tursi and Vicky Highland in the audience. As always, it's exciting to be here and tell you about the new Coolidge Elementary as it starts to take shape in the very early stages of the project. Joe and I are going to tag-team a little bit on this to give you a quick update, but the agenda basically saved, passed in May, and from there, we launched into our work. We'll walk you through some benchmarking tours, stakeholder engagement meetings, where we've been getting more and more involved with folks in the community, as well as in the district, programming, and then we'll wrap up with our next steps in our schedule.
So for the benchmarking, we took three vans, about 18 people, for two days, went up into Wisconsin and Illinois, saw five different schools, saw some great stuff. We're gonna kind of flip through some images and talk about some of the highlights. So from the exterior perspective, a couple of the things that became evident was everybody liked durable materials, some splashes of the colors, and trying to separate the different drop-off zones. When we walked into the building and started talking about how the entrance and the administration should feel, the biggest ones were being very secure, getting good natural light and visibility from the offices. Then when we started into the building, obviously, we were walking through in the circulations, and one of the big things, and this is gonna be a common theme, is natural light, getting as much natural light into the heart of the building as we can, using some bold colors, and doing a good job of doing branding for the school and the district. Some of the dislikes of circulation were having open spaces that the kids maybe could climb out and cause issues in stairs or in second-story spaces, long tunnel-like corridors, and then having anything inside the corridors like cubbies or lockers, that would be problematic for getting the kids in and out quick. In the classrooms, there's a lot of good things we saw. One of the biggest ones was instead of the kind of traditional school of just a classroom along the corridor, actually trying to do a pod or like a family room that four or five classrooms would share a common space. Within that common space would be shared bathrooms, resources. Each of those neighborhoods would have its own character. And then again, plenty of natural light and a good connection between the common space and the classrooms, so that people could share in what the educational experiences were happening between spaces. Some of the dislikes were there wasn't, in a couple of the classrooms, very good storage, and then it was also found out that no one really wanted mobile storage. So in the Media Center, some of the biggest takeaways was large, open spaces, good connection between that space and the kind of subspaces within the Media Center, and then trying to find a way to incorporate like a maker's space or a creative space. Dislikes were fixed shelving and tall shelving, kind of knocking down the ability for whoever's in that space to monitor the kids. In the cafeteria, again, part of that common, having a great connection to the outside, getting some high ceilings, having a bench and hooks, so that when the kids come in from recess to go to lunch, they have a place to change and hang their stuff. Some of the dislikes were, one of them had very poor acoustics, which obviously we won't do, not having good adjacency to the playgrounds, and too busy in aesthetic. In the gymnasiums, again, part of that theme, good natural light with windows. Size of the gym would be a little larger than a typical, so that there'd be the ability for community sharing, and then just good durable surfaces. Some of the dislikes were no natural light, poor maintenance of floors, and not having a good aesthetic in the space. Some of the outdoor learning spaces wanted to have creative play, appropriate learning spaces, and age-appropriate equipment. Dislikes, some of the spaces were just very bland and were not programmed at all, and obviously we'll work to not have that happen. Then we got into visioning, and we had a great meeting with the Steering Committee. We did two exercises, one where we asked two questions, and we allowed the Steering Committee to put up answers. One was kind of a general, if the school could be. And then we also did a dot exercise, and we had several, four panels of images, and we asked them to vote on things that they liked and didn't like, and then kind of give us their feedback. That went really well, and then we followed suit with the groups. We did pre-K, A-K-K, first, second, and special ed, third, fourth, fifth, and then we did Buildings and Grounds, we did a paras, and then we did the Administrator's nurse. You can see that we did a Wordle for each of those rooms, those different groups, and you can kind of see what rose to the top. Safe, separate pickup for the youngest kids, acoustics collaborative for the first and second graders, storage and biophilic, meaning a good connection to the outside for the third, fourth, fifth, where they're starting to kind of integrate the science a little more. We wanted a welcoming space for the art, music, gym, office, and nurse, colorful, good acoustics. The paras really wanted something welcoming with a lot of good daylight, and then the Steering Committee was secure, daylight, and welcoming, so. And then we combined all that, and that was the Wordle for everybody. So you can see welcoming by far is the biggest thing that we're gonna start to work toward. We also did programming. We had a two-session group with not everybody on the Steering Committee, but that really was a great conversation. We really beat up what needs to happen in the school. We had come in with what are typical schools, and then had some spaces to fill in. We really developed this. You can see that a little more succinctly in the packet, and we've turned that over to the district. So at this point, I think I'll turn it over to Roger, and we'll talk about the rest of the programming. The programming blocks are what we used to develop some of the concepts that Roger's gonna share with you.
These are basically where you start to give size, space, and volume to different, different functions of the building. So each color represents a different, different function throughout the elementary school, and those are driven by that sheet just beforehand. You'll hear us speak very often about engagement, communication, just having that, that voice at the table is so important. If you ever question the value of benchmarking or visioning exercises, and just getting everyone, or giving everyone the ability to see what you've seen during benchmarking or these dot exercises, as we start to have more and more community-wide exercises like this, it is amazing the folks that will come from the back row to the front row to be a part of this project, and that is so, so important as we move through this. So this is where it starts to get fun, specific to Coolidge. Just understanding the site, we have the three ball diamonds along the south side of the site, the existing building in white, parking, playground, and such. You know, this is where we really want to understand, what do we have to work with? Site information would be the utilities. It's electric.
It's electrical, it's water, it's sewer, it's gas. How do the services work on the existing site? And these are all considerations that we take into as the facts of what we have to deal with as we start to understand how we can site a new building into this existing site. Even understanding how daylight from winter to summer impacts the building, the traffic flow around the building, so on and so forth. We did test fits of how could we fit about a ninety thousand square foot maybe on other areas of the site? So the orange rectangles that you see are, what would the impact be if we went along the west side, the north side, the east side? And we quickly came to the understanding that without some major impact to existing building function, cost, schedule, we consistently come back to the south side of the site. And in working with the city, we're finding that is really the best alternative. Understanding the section through the site, just the grade from high to low, there's a significant amount of drop across that site from the east to the low end on the west. And then we started to look at how do the plans work? And this, again, came about from benchmarking as different groups understood how the house versus a pod, the academic environment was structured. We looked at several scenarios of how these could work. And then what you're seeing here are six examples of test fits arranging academics, fine arts, athletics, administration. What could those floor plan configurations start to look like as we place them along the south side of the existing Coolidge on that, along the south side of the site? And we're leaning towards that south middle one. And that came together through not only benchmarking, understanding floor plans and just how the floor plans worked, but also through the visioning of what does that shape start to offer you three dimensionally? How does it address the neighbors across the street to the south, to the east, to the west? Because when this project is all done in a few years and the old Coolidge is gone, we are going to have a building that will be there for sixty, seventy-plus years. We want to know we were making the right decisions tonight through the duration of this design process so everything's right when we're all done. So a quick, high-level test fit of what this could look like on the south side of the existing Coolidge, three academic wings to the south, gymnasium to the upper right, and the classrooms on the north side. Two-level building. So again, we're still very high-level, but we are quickly dialing into details on the site. Schedule, the yellow bar is basically where we are right now in September. We're moving through schematic design. Then we'll move down to the orange bar, which will be design development through the rest of the fall. And then into winter, we'll be moving along with construction drawing. So there will be an incredible amount of work done in the next few months. So with that, if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
So when your meeting, the first meeting, you'll be hearing all this information and the diagrams, and so folks can take a look at it and getting their input.
To the community meetings?
Yeah.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, the more you can inform, the better you build that confidence in the community, the more they can understand, ask the questions. You know, the more perspective you can get, really, the more clearer the picture becomes.
I have a question about the community shared spaces. If any of the facilities that you visited, what the feedback on those spaces were?
Yeah, several of the facilities that we visited had that community use program where you had access to the gym, to the commons, maybe a little bit off and on to the media center. The key driver to that is how do you isolate that portion of the building for after-hours or weekend use? So you still maintain building security so all of those areas are available and then not have any access to the academic wings. And that's a pretty standard approach, you know, in a school facility like this.
And it was well received by those facilities and by that neighborhood, by the community?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
It was well-used and added to the community?
Yes, absolutely. Absolutely. And I think even we'll find as we move through these community engagement meetings, we'll see the importance of the need and how we address it as far as function. That's a big, big piece. You know, an elementary school is a hub of a neighborhood, and that neighborhood's a lot larger than just a few blocks, and it's families, it's relatives that come in for weekend volleyball tournaments. And it's a big factor.
Thank you.
So along those same lines with community use, I think there's already organizations that use that building today. I didn't see any, at least not that I saw, anything that they were consulted or they were asked to share, you know, what they were looking for in a building. Did I miss that? Or when you went through the different word sections, there was what, pre-K, K?
No, actually, that'll be part of the community engagement. And so we'll have two meetings, one at Coolidge and then one downtown at Nuvo. And the hope is that the community will come in and start to dialogue.
Well, I'm not saying specifically the community, the community organization. So sometimes it's like before and after-school programs, Boys and Girls Club, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts. You know, some of those different entities. I think at various schools, we have, you know, feeder programs for sports. So all of those different entities, obviously, yeah, some of it involves use of a gym, maybe use of a lunchroom. But I think in some cases, when you look at before and after-school programs or other things like that, they're looking for potentially other uses or other things. So as of yet, there hasn't been any discussion with them, and the thought is to include that as part of the larger community?
We extended invitations to them to participate in those upcoming community events. But also, in addition to that, the work with the city over the summer, you mentioned the, for example, junior Jayhawks, engaging with them because the ball fields are affected with this plan. So we're making the subsequent plan for west side access over the next couple of summers as that part of the, as we start to build, it will not be accessible. So we have a replacement plan, working specifically with those organizations. But I think what will be really interesting is just what you just described. How will those organizations hope to see the use of the facility? Many of them are wondering about what will happen with the outdoor space and how can they engage with that part of the process as well.
And Vicky, you just gave me an update that there is a flyer that's coming out to kind of cast a wider net to make sure that we're getting community engagement all the way around.
Yep, that was part of the superintendent update tonight that just went out blasted through all of our families. But also, I think at three of our, the three elementaries that are most affected by this, Jackson, Truman, and Coolidge, them doing an extra push out to their family engagements, but specifically inviting those additional community organizations to the sixteenth and the twenty-fifth.
Right, okay.
Well, I would also hope that through some of this community outreach, we might see some ideas or requests for things that we don't currently now have. I'm thinking of, since I'm in that generation, part of the generation of how about our access for our elderly? They don't have to necessarily be parents or students, but they are community members. And the ability for that population to have space and interact and so on. Access to community labs, access to being involved with the school itself. So I hope that we have some of those also participants.
Yes, absolutely. Our goal is to have as much of a broad cross-section of the community as we can for this. And if we start to see there's something missing, we'll seek out those different pools or those groups of folks to make sure that we've covered all the bases.
Well, as you pointed out, these are buildings that we plan on seeing for sixty or seventy years. And the name of the game now is change and adaptation. And so to be able to have flexibility or some foresight, you know, it's tough to look five years ahead, let alone ten or fifteen. But I think the more creativity that we can put into it.
And one of the things, you guys heard last month at your meeting that the city is working in conjunction with the district. And so that's really important, so that these community open houses. Well, one of the stations will actually be city, or city Department of Parks and Recs. They'll actually have a station there so that we can get that input too for site use and how we can best serve the community.
Very good.
I have a question, I have actually two questions. Now, I understand you guys are architects, so maybe this is, it's an instructional question. So maybe you weren't gathering instructional information as well when you were meeting with some already existing facilities. I'm wondering if there was any feedback about that pod kind of ability for some collaborative effort with staff members, small group differentiation and instructions?
So one of the fun things is, and I'm actually not an architect, which actually makes us a great team because these guys are architects, and I had come from more of the education background and worked a lot with going around and visiting schools all over the country. And, well, we all get to visit schools regionally and nationally. But it's very important to us to understand how education is being delivered and what that authentic learning looks like and how to provide opportunities. And when we talk about those collaborative spaces in between classrooms, we see that it's very valuable, and we get excited by it. And so we design that way, we go out and learn about that way. We learn about the biophilic design with the brain research and having kids exposed to the natural outside. But inside, say you have two classroom teachers, and they have two or three kids that are on either end of the spectrum really gifted or just need that diversity. You can, when you have those collaborative spaces that you can send kids together and you have that visual observation of what they're doing, you give them opportunities to work together across classrooms and for teachers to work across their boundaries of walls. You have those opportunities, so we see a lot of benefits to that.
Great. And then my other question actually is more architect-related. And that is, I just want to be assured that the design of these buildings are not only ADA compliant, but that there's intentional design around inclusivity for our ADA students and staff, faculty, parents, families.
Yeah, absolutely. ADA is kind of a foundation of design, all the way from the minute you get onto the site, all the way through the building. So accessibility is a big part of it. Yeah, even playgrounds.
So it's intentional. It's not an add-on, it's not something just to make it compliant?
It's a core design.
It's intentional design.
Absolutely.
Excellent.
We had an additional meeting with the administrators from each of those buildings along with Executive Director Christensen around this exact topic of what our greatest hopes are for those spaces. So when we were looking at the programming of the square footage, very large square footage spaces for supporting our children with special needs because we need to be flexible with what the needs are, but also being really creative to provide access and opportunities. So we had a deeper dive around that. It was good conversations, fun conversations.
A couple of questions. One, acoustics came up several times during, in several different areas. How do you handle, you have any ideas, how do you handle to redo or improve the acoustics in an area?
Yeah, it depends on the space. When you think of a gymnasium, big volume, tall ceilings, hard walls all the way around, we break down the acoustics and wall treatments. You can do surface-applied padding to a certain degree up high. We do concrete block that has perforations in it with sound-absorptive material behind it. Even the ceiling is a perforated metal deck that has an insulation in it. That just helps take that sound down. When you think of classroom spaces between the classrooms, isolating sound between them, not only with the material that you're constructing, but how that detail works up through the construction as it attaches to the ceiling. Because sound isn't just through air, it travels through materials, heavy sound, impact sound, that kind of sound.
I'm sorry.
You manage it in multiple different ways. Anything you want to add to that? You know, you go through the fine arts, there's ceilings assemblies that actually are resilient that take vibration out of the air and don't transfer up into structure.
So we moved past flocking gym ceilings with asbestos, right?
Yes.
The other is, a lot of natural light wanting. Does that create safety concerns as far as large windows?
Yep, to some people, yes. And it's hard because we also educate ourselves very deeply on school safety. And all of you know, because you have to be educated on school safety, that, say, intruders, that can often be a low incidence but high-impact occurrence. So children really are as apt or more apt to be hurt by, you know, a bus or car traffic or things like that that interfere with them on the site or even within the building, tripping hazards and things like that. There are more occurrences of something like that happening. So when you start to weigh education and how you want to deliver education and the research that's out there on how kids take in education and the brain research in terms of reaction to outside, you do some basic security things in terms of having safety and in terms of your drop-off areas and your locked vestibules when you come into buildings, you're locking down building or exterior doors, you're minimizing exterior doors. But you don't want to take away some of that interaction with nature. You really have to balance that.
A thought just came to me is, would it be really financially impossible? But new technologies all the time, they have, is there not windows that you can change from clear to?
There are, there's ballistic glass, and there are films that you can put on. We attended a, OPN attended a, and we constantly learn more and more as new technologies come out. And there's everything from identifying people in areas that are at risk to facial identification. All that is very expensive technology, so you start to weigh the things that make sense. Maybe at the entry, some districts choose to use a glazing. It's a film that you can put on glass so that reduces, it might shatter instead of break with, say, a bullet or something like that. But those are all very high-cost impact. If you went to like all ballistic glass, that's very expensive. So we do look at all those. We've spent, last summer, we attended, in fact, a week-long conference on school safety and heard everything from having kits in classrooms, which make a lot of sense in terms of they're just emergency kits, and they include things like tourniquets or things like that. Because typically, when a really bad event happens, a lot of the mortalities occur because kids, there's no tourniquets there, they bleed out basically. So it's educating on how to respond to intruders, and when there is an occurrence, how do you react? And how do you keep the kids until paramedics or first responders can arrive?
Having been in the classroom for a number of years, the better environment, having more natural light for educational purposes is, and it's just, I don't know, it's just sad, sad, sad that we're at a point that we can't sometimes do what's educationally best.
It's sad that we have to have the conversations.
Yeah, thank you. Excellent presentation, by the way. We really appreciate the work that you've done going into this.
Any other questions?
I have a couple. So with the benchmarking, would you guys know what the ages were of the buildings that were visited? Were they newly constructed? Were they five years out, seven? What were the ages?
So, go ahead. Most of the ones that we saw were newer, but we all have been on benchmarking tours where we've seen everything from very old schools that have had renovated additions put onto them. We've seen things that are brand-new, we've seen things that are really of all age. The particular one that we went on were.
Probably just constructed, I think the oldest was five years.
Yeah.
On this trip.
So specifically for this trip, right?
But we've been on trips where they were, like you said, much older.
So newly constructed to about five years or so?
On this trip.
Okay, so the reason I was asking about that is, once a building's there, if it's brand-new, you know, there's people that aren't used to traffic patterns, they're not seeing who's coming or going, they're not seeing what the irregularities are for those buildings, right? So that's what I was kind of wondering about that from the perspective of, say, like neighbors. So what do we hear from people that are around, you know, these buildings? What happens as time goes on? Are there things that they would have suggested or that we would have benefited from knowing, or they would have benefited from knowing when that process started?
From the next-door neighbors?
Yeah, just that whole process. That, I mean, there's a difference between a brand-new building that just came up on fresh ground versus a building that's been there five years. People get used to what occurs with the patterns of kids getting dropped off, picked up, and what happens in and around the building.
Yeah, and actually, that is probably one of the top topics that we address every time we sit down as a design team, are all those homes around that entire site. You know, on the east side, we have homes that back right up to the fence. To the south side, we have homes that are across the street. To the south side, we have homes that are across the street with their front yards looking at the school. On the east side, it's our backyards, on the west side, it's our front yards. So there's scalable things there, because your backyard, you want to look at a 30-foot-tall gymnasium or a one-story classroom addition. So we're taking all that volume and mass into consideration for those neighbors specifically, and to have them at the table, which is our goal of these community meetings, is, let's talk through this. Let's explain what your backyard is today, and what will it be a year from now, a year and a half from now? Because not only is it the buildings, sorry, Dave, it's also the flow around the building, you know, are you having buses go by your house now that weren't there when this project started? What's the volume of traffic?
Right.
How are these kids crossing, you know, coming and going? So there's a lot of moving parts to this, and we want to get them all organized with all the folks that are part of it, including the neighbors.
Right.
There was actually, one building was, was an older building, and they added on, but you could not tell that it was not brand-new. It all flowed, and you walked in, it was hard to tell, old part of the building and the new part of the building. And it was one that actually changed things in the neighborhood, with buses drop off and actually improved it.
Right.
And so that was kind of a unique situation, it was, so they used part of the old building, and they added a good section on it, but you could not tell when you were in the old building. It was that nicely done, and the changes they made within the neighborhood actually was a vast improvement. Yeah, we're starting right now doing a traffic study around the school, so we know
what is the volume of certain types of traffic at certain times of day, and then predict what will it be when the new building is up and running.
And that's kind of what I was leading to, and I hadn't seen in there that it had outlined as part of the process, hey, we started looking at maybe environmental impact study, traffic study, you know, things like that, so that's good to hear that that's being looked at as well.
Any other questions?
Well, you know, it just occurred to me, along that same line, that we're also looking at building a larger school than there, so there is going to be more students, more parents, more traffic just because of that, so that's somewhat unknown or whatever until that becomes open.
Neighborhoods to the west that are going to spring up, because there's a kind of bypass coming through.
Right.
So there's going to be, it's going to change the dynamic of the site.
But again, I think you're taking the right step of involving the neighborhood, letting them see what it is, what's going on, and letting them feel that they have some ownership, they have some voice in this whole process too, which is important from our standpoint.
Any other questions? I want to thank you for your...
I just have a comment.
Do you have a comment?
I just have a comment, and that is that I am incredibly, I've seen some of the new facilities that have designated bus lanes and designated procedures for drop-off and pickup, and I'm super excited about that, still having kids in school. There is nothing worse than pickup and drop-off, so I'm super looking forward to that improvement.
And we're trying carefully to look at, when you look at the age of kiddos we're going to have, so you have everything from preschoolers and moms and dads dropping off, carrying a baby maybe in a carrier and walking a toddler into preschool, to parents dropping off and being met by an administrator or a parent educator, and to buses dropping off to walkers and bikers. So we're trying to be very intentional about those different ways of getting to the site, and trying, the more we can separate and make that safe, the better.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for the presentation, and I encourage the community to come to the sessions on September the 16th at Coolidge, and September the 25th at Newville, because it is important that we hear your voices. So please sit in, and thank you so much for the presentation.
Good night. What time will it start?
The 16th, I believe it's at 4:30 to 6:30, and the 25th...
Six, six to eight.
Six to eight. I got to frame my piece of paper here. Okay. What we have left is, I remind the board to fill out their evaluation forms, and also take a copy of the board calendar, and with no other further business, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.